Okay. Welcome, everyone, to this March 23 zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I'm gonna start with a roll call vote. Mr. Swaim?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Oh. Mr. Smith is unmuting. Mr. Faya?
Yes.
Mr. Kindermans?
Present.
Yep, I'm here, sorry.
Great, that's Mr. Smith and Ms. Akersmore here. Um, great, let's go ahead and get started, the 7:00 PM. Sorry, what? So, the Cocker Center for the Visual Arts has requested a continuance without discussion to the May 11th meeting. Do we have anything on our agenda already for May 11th?
I... Uh, no. You do not.
Okay, so 7:00 PM?
Perfect, thank you.
Can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the meeting. For the Visual Arts to, uh, May 11, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, sorry.
Great, to have a second.
I'm recused on this one, so no, I can't.
No, second.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Mr. Faya?
Aye.
And Ms. Akersmore, aye. Um, great, well, we have three minutes, do we want to go ahead and move to our minutes? Did anyone have any comments? I had like one minor comment.
Um, Robbie, you had wanted it, so, um, that, that will be changed.
Yeah, there was a correction where I think, um, Tom was listed as the voting member instead of me, so.
Correct. Yeah, that will be fixed.
Great, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
As amended.
As amended.
Don't move.
Move to me.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Oh wait, sorry, you moved, someone seconded. Was that? Oh, great, okay, all in favor, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Ms. Akersmore? Hi, am I frozen?
You're frozen.
Okay, well, you can hear me, so that's all that matters. Um, interesting. Hold on one sec. Huh, but you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Cool. Huh. Well, I'm trying to stop and restart it, but I'm not sure that's gonna work, give me one sec. Alright, I might just join on my phone, give me one second.
You're doing fine.
Yeah.
You want to see me paused in that, alright, that's fine.
You know, you're no different than you would be on your phone.
Yeah, no, that's true. Um, great, I can make any facial expression I want and no one will know. Um.
You, um.
Freeze.
Elizabeth, do you want me to try and stop your video and then you come back?
Yeah, sure.
Nope.
Hmm, okay.
Alright, let's proceed.
Let's proceed. Um, we are going ahead, 7:05, Rebecca Green, is Rebecca Green here, yes, Rebecca, would you like to go ahead or Elise, are you presenting? Oh, can't hear you.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, yes, I am representing Rebecca.
Right.
Okay, so, um, Rebecca lives at 127 Belknap Street, it's a single-family residence in, um, residency. Um, and we are asking, we're here tonight asking for a special permit for a side setback. The house is currently non-conforming to the side setback. The closest point is, um, so this is the proposed, the closest point is 4.1, which is not shown here because we're removing that that close part and we're adding two additions and a small deck. So the one addition on the side, um, conforms to all setbacks, so that's fine. The one in the back, um, is 8.3 from the side setback. But as I mentioned before, the closest point now from the deck, that might be on the other site plan, is 4.1. So, um, we are not making a non-conforming worse. Um, the deck, the new little deck that's also being added is also within the setback, so we're fine. Um, the existing house square footage is 1,026 square feet. And we are adding 261 square feet, so we are bringing the total to 1,287 square feet. The allowable FAR for this lot is 22,624 square feet, so we are, we are still way under the FAR. Um, and also the 50% rule, if we did that one, we would be allowed to add 513. Hello? Oh.
Hi, I'm joining the.
Oh. Hi, sorry. Should I continue?
Yeah, you're fine, Elise, go ahead.
Okay, um, so we're still under, so the allowable by the 50% rule is 513 square feet. And so, as I mentioned, we were only adding 261, so we're still under that. So really, what we're in front of you for tonight is, is the side setback. Um, it's a, it's a corner lot, so that's why we have the two side setbacks in the back. Um, we do have, you should have in your package, um, a few letters from neighbors who are all completely, um, have no issue with this.
Yes, we did have that.
Okay, great.
Um, that's great, um, let me go ahead and ask the board if there are any questions.
No question, for me, it seems very, uh, straightforward.
I agree. Uh, anyone else?
No.
Okay, let me go ahead and, as I said, see, let's throw it to public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and open public comment, if anyone has any, please press the raise hand button. Elizabeth, do you see anyone? I can't see anything.
No, but we should, we should note and Elise noted that as well, is that there were, uh, at least a couple of letters in, in the packet or emails in the packet of, about us, direct about us, uh, who are supporting this, so we should note that.
Great, alright, if there's no other public comment, I will go ahead and close public comments. Um, as everyone else said, very straightforward and I have no issues with it, so I am ready to take a motion unless anyone wanted to have, add anything else.
I'll just do it as part of the motion, I guess I'll move, uh, to, uh, grant a special permit to Rebecca Green, uh, under zoning by law, section 7.1.3, 7.1.5, 11.6, to construct two additions, totally 261 square feet. Uh, with one addition being eight feet, three inches from the side property line on the existing 1,026 square foot non-conforming dwelling at 127 Belknap Street, noting that, um, the, uh, the reconfiguration of the house actually reduces the non-conformity from by, um, by making the minimum, uh, minimum setback 8.3 feet as opposed to 4.1 feet. Um, and that, um, there are no, uh, other, um, in all other respects, the, the, um, dwelling is conforming. The dwellings conforming on the lot, we understand the lot is, of course, a non-conforming lot to begin with, which is why people are here.
I second that motion.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
And Ms. Akersmore, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'm going to attempt to rejoin on my computer, because I can't, oh, no, can't do anything.
Yeah, you're, you're moving.
I'm moving, but I can't see any, like, I'm only seeing one.
Oh, we're seeing, he's moving on our iPhones.
Yeah, I'm on my iPhone, it's just kind of annoying, but we'll see what happens. Uh, let's see, what time is it now, 7:10, great, moving on to the Cocker Public Schools for sign variance, who is here for the Cocker Public Schools?
Hi, this is Stephen Ventresco with Niche Engineering. And also I have Mike Dallin, hi, we have Mike Dallin also, um, he's with SMMA, he's the landscape architect for the project.
Good evening.
Great, aye. Um, you can go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna share screen. Hmm, here we go, so, um, this is the sign variance request for the new Concord Middle School project located at 835 Old Marlboro Road. And I just wanted to show the board, the, um, existing location, the existing, um, building, uh, which is here, and then the new school is gonna be, uh, in this location where the existing field is currently at the tree line. Um, the sign that we're requesting the variance for is, will be approximately here um, on the site as you see it today, and if I zoom out, I'll show you a plan that highlights where that is, um, so this is the, the new building here and here, these two locations, and then this is where the sign is, um, where the new driveway entrance is. The sign in question is two, has two sides to it. Um, it is about four feet high from finished grade, it has a, uh, precast concrete cap. And then the facade of the sign on each side is, uh, our bricks that will match the, uh, pattern with the school. And then the lettering for the sign, um, are saying the steel letters that are raised off the brick, as you can see in this, uh, detail right here. And they're, uh, backlit with LED lights, and the LED lights will be set on a timer, and those lights will be turned off from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, um, during the week. The, um, favorite part here that we're wanna see is the site rendering, and Mike, maybe I'll ask you to, to talk a little bit more, um, about the sign, but, um, if you want, but this is essentially what the sign will look like. Um, and this is, of course, just showing one face at the driveway entrance, um, it'll be the same on the other side. So the, the request is, is a variance for, um, the sign greater than two square feet in the residential district. Um, and then also under the administration, um, portion, under section 3C2. But Mike, if you want to add anything, um, please do.
No, I don't think, I think you covered everything.
Okay. Great, so if there's any, any questions, be happy to entertain them.
Um, does the board have any questions?
Yes.
Note for the record that we're under the side bylaw here.
How many square feet will the new sign be?
Go back to the detail for a minute, Steve.
Yeah. So it's 15 feet long by four feet high, so, uh, quick math, quick math, 60?
60 on each side, though, we should say. It is, it is a two-sided sign, rather than having two signs, we put one sign at the, uh, at the main entrance and, and made it two-sided, rotated 90 degrees to the street.
But on one side, how many square feet will that be?
60 feet, 60 square feet, sir.
Okay.
Well, 60 square foot, is that, that's, uh, the brick, right, so the sign face itself, you know, if you were to draw, draw a box around the lettering, you'd be.
It'd be definitely smaller, yeah, yeah, the, the 4 by 15 is from the top of the precast cap, uh, Teo, to, uh, you know, to the, to ground point.
Yeah, yeah.
I would point out to the board, well, I happen to like the sign, however, I think the, the board needs to look at 5G of the sign bylaw, which said one side may not exceed 12 square feet.
That's the reason they're before the board for variance.
Correct. Thank you, Elizabeth.
So the variance is both the size and that it's, are we considering this two signs?
Correct.
It is considered two signs.
Yeah. And I, I have a question about where the 11:00 PM comes from, seems a little bit late to me for turning off the lights, um.
Yeah, I think that, I think that 11:00 PM comes in discussions with the building inspector, and those were the times that, that he said indicated would be, you know, 11, we can certainly, you know, amend it if you want to go 9 o'clock or 10:00 PM, I don't know, Mike, if you have any issues with that, you know, based on program.
Nope.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not, might be difficult, but even though they're asking for a variance from the 12 feet up to 60, if you go to, uh, 3 C2, which are variances, it gives you the one, two, the three situations in which the board may grant the variance. And so for those of you voting on it, I think you need to focus on that for a second, to make sure which one, one of these might fall within.
Um, yes, I guess if we go through those, uh, necessary to comply with other applicable laws, the Board of Appeals determines that the circumstances involved with a particular sign are not contemplated by the bylaw. Um, I guess I'm leaning towards that one. We're in a residential area, it's, I mean, I would say that it for a school setting, I would be okay with that, um, unnecessary hardship. Sorry, Teo.
Yeah, I, I wanted to add to that as well, uh, you said, because, because it's a school in a residential setting, I would also want to add there, because it's assumed that you have a small lot. And this, this, this lot is, uh, considerably larger and has several entrances to the lot, se- several curb cuts. So, you know, having one sign clearly identifying in the scale of the, the setting, um, I think would be an argument.
Tom, any other thoughts on that?
Nope, no.
Okay, uh, any other comments from the board?
I apologize, I can't. I have a comment, question, I guess. Yeah. The, the, the comment is, is that I think that, um, we need to be realistic here and recognize that it's, it's actually doing a disservice to the town not to have a sign of this kind of size in front of a school. I mean, there's lots and lots and lots of people who are going to it, there's lots and lots of people who are going to it who are not familiar with where it is, because they're coming from other locations. Um, this is consistent with the signs that are in front of other schools within the town, or at least particularly, at least the high school, so I just think that I'll flip that around and say that I agree with Tom, that we have to find the thing that we're dealing with, but we also, I think, need to, for the variance, but I think we also need to recognize that um, the town would not be served in this case by having a sign that wasn't prominent for, um, this very public building. And my question is, is that I don't know who, um, if it's the public safety officer or who that thinks about the issue of sight lines from this in terms of I'm fine with the sign, I'm fine with the lettering, I'm fine with everything, I just want to make sure that when you get to the entrance of this, um, driveway, that you've got plenty of sight line, and you're not looking into the sign as you're trying to enter, you're trying to leave the facility. And I can't tell, of course, based on, I can see that, but you've got it written there, but I don't know, it's enough. So I assume somebody who's more expert than me is gonna be able to, is gonna be able to, like a public safety officer, would be able to think about that, and I just want to make sure that's noted.
And, and, I, and I, I think, you know, uh, the presenter might, might have an opinion about that, I think it's, you know, you'd need a good vantage point, and I think it's about 10 feet behind the, the stop line. Um, and then you, you'd have to, you know, draw a a corner vision. And, you know, and, and just no pun intended by eyeballing here, I think, I think that should be pretty done, uh, pretty close, but, you know.
Um, so. Yeah, so what I'd like to suggest, because, um, I'm, I'm, um, unless Steve can say he did a sightline study because of the curve in Old Marlboro Road, what I'd like to just suggest is that the board condition, um, the location, the final location be reviewed by Public Works Engineering and the applicant provide appropriate, um, site distance information, uh, and that, you know, if the sign has to be, you know, pulled back a little bit further, um, it could be pulled back a little further.
I, I think that's correct, because it.
Or, so to the applicant, has, I assume that has not been done then yet?
Well, I may say so.
Go ahead.
Just one second, we, we had, uh, uh, we had engaged, uh, our traffic, uh, consultant, Brian Associates, um, during the design phase to, um, to work on sightline. Um, the, the same sort of sightline issues that we're talking about here for the, um, uh, for the next, uh, southern curb cut, because that's right, that's on the curve. Uh, so we had, we have, uh, a sightline study for that curb cut, that entrance exit curb cut for the, um, for the buses and for the, uh, uh, for the loading dock, we, we, we had a sightline distance study, uh, done for that, so we feel relatively confident that um, if the sightlines, uh, coming from south to north serve that, um, that curb cut, that, then, then they would also serve the sign which is further north, more on a straightaway.
No, no, I, so the issue is somebody sitting in that driveway with a four-foot-high sign, sitting in a car, looking, looking left. Um, so I, I think the, the easiest way is that the board condition approval, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant provides sightline, um, sightline distance, uh, to Public Works Engineering to confirm that the location of the sign provides adequate sight distance, and if it does not, then the sign will have to be pulled back a little.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and then Elizabeth, would it be you administratively approving any minor change in location as opposed to coming back here?
Um, oh yeah, no, they would not have to come back to the board, the, um, the building commissioner has the ability to provide, uh, to approve those types of, uh, minor modifications.
Elizabeth, if I may, could you just define what you mean by pull back a little bit, I'm not sure, I, I understand what you mean.
Well, I, I can.
So you're.
Find, I'll define it for what I said, just said, which is that if the sign is too close to the road, you can imagine that as you're sitting at the entrance, looking to your left, you're gonna look at a sign instead of looking at the road to see the traffic. And, and all we're saying is if it has to come a little bit further back from the road.
Pull back off, off of the right of way.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense, I understand that, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board before I open a public comment?
Um, I don't, but my last question, did the board settle on it? Um, lights out from nine to seven or 10 to seven?
I mean, there are other things that go past, probably there are things that go past nine, so I would.
Ten, sometimes.
Yeah, ten, two, Jim?
I think, well, you know, you never, you know, you got a concert, it ends at 9:30, people hanging around.
Yeah, I gotta say that the 11 doesn't really bug me, um, given.
Yeah, I, I just asked the question to see if there was some kind of thought behind the time, I, I don't have a problem with 11 if that's, you know, if that's acceptable to folks, and if we don't hear, you know, the neighbors' grounds about it.
Right. I guess as long as there aren't complaints about it. Um, so it looks like we will leave it as is at 11, ending at 11, but, um, any other comments before I open a public comment? Okay, let me go ahead and open a public comment, anyone out there have a question or comment? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment, um, alright, I think we've addressed all of our concerns, um, Tom, we've addressed the, the variance issue under the sign bylaw, uh, we've talked about safety, um, and I am comfortable getting a motion unless anyone has anything to add. Okay.
Trying to find the. So I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to issue a, uh, sign variance to the Concord Public Schools on the sections 3C2 and 7A of the sign bylaw to install a sign of more than two square feet in an area at the main entrance to 835 Old Marlboro Road, Castle 3010 dash two dash one. Um, with the findings that.
You can just say, you can just say the, the findings as discussed by the board this evening. I think I got them all.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
And the, and the, and the conditions.
And the condition, yeah. And, and, and the condition, well, the, the, the condition, the only condition I think was the, uh.
Sight distance and, um, lighting, time, time lighting.
But we're leaving the lighting at.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um.
Do I?
Then, right?
Yeah. Great, all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Akersmore, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
More times, I just want to know how many more times this school's gonna be in front of us here, but.
Um.
Beautiful building.
One, one more time.
Getting built.
It's all the way.
Wait, what's the next one, Elizabeth? I thought this was it.
Uh, no, no, somebody's gonna bring the, the solar in the parking lot.
You won't see Mike and I, we'll, we'll wait for your decision with bated breath.
Okay, well, somebody should tell somebody to actually file the application.
This is very helpful, good, yes, we will relay that message, thank you, yes, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Everyone, thank you.
Uh, great, moving on. 7:15, WH Walden LLC, who is here presenting?
Uh, it's Tom Falwell, Coleman's Inubary, acting as counsel for the property owner and applicant, uh, uh, WH Walden LLC. Uh, as you know, the application before you seeks a special permit for site plan review for second story addition to the existing building at 59 Walden Street, and instant to that relief from parking and parking design standards. Uh, as you'll recall, we were, we appeared before the last month, providing with the details of the project. Uh, since that time, nothing material has changed, uh, Rich Harrington, the project engineer, will go over the modifications of the project plan that have been made since the prior meeting. And none of the changes of the plans are substantive in nature, and are off the design components, elevations, and floor plans as shown in the plans filed with you when it's previously approved by the HTC. Uh, in summary, since the earlier ZBA hearing, uh, the applicant worked with the, uh, uh, K and the NRC on some what we call tweaks to the plans, the result of which is that we expect the NRC to issue an order of conditions at the next meeting, which is, I, on April 5th, I believe. Um, the applicant similarly worked cooperatively with, uh, Elizabeth and the planning board, and on Tuesday evening, obtained the board's support and recommendations for favorable action by your board on the application with the number of conditions. Uh, the applicant's accepting of all the conditions contained in the planning board's letter of recommendation. Um, just to reiterate on the Zoom call tonight for WH Walden, uh, Chris and Edie, Edie Hill, who operate Keller Williams Realty, Boston Northwest, it's currently a 200 Baker Ave and Frank Widmeyer, uh, of members of the LLC. And as previously noted, Keller Williams offices will be relocated from the Baker Street address to Walden Street when the project is complete. Uh, Rich Harrington, as I say, is the project engineer. And on the call, I think, as well as Andy Liveroud, Andy Liveroud from Design Science, Deb Howes, uh, landscape, uh, landscape architect and, uh, the general contractor for the project, who was Mike Markley, and editor of Nigga Construction. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to turn things over to Rich Harrington to take you through the, the, um, relatively minor changes that were made to the plan since we were last before you. Rich.
Can, can I do, point of order here, so this has been presented to the board before, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so I was, I missed that meeting. So I, and I did not view a tape, so just an FII that, that I think, uh, Robbie might want to vote on this, and not me.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, Rich?
Uh, very good, good evening, everyone, uh, thank you for your time tonight. Uh, as, as directed when we left the last meeting, uh, everyone was in agreement of our process of adjusting the pavement in in front of you on my screen is the finished landscape plan, which shows a robust plantings at the top of the screen along Mill Brook. And we're inviting the pavement forward towards Walden Street, and we still maintain the counterclockwise circulation through the site out to the exit. And we would have an updated area behind the building like we talked about for the electric vehicle charging station and then upgrading the utilities, et cetera, outside for the heat pumps. And we have 20 spaces today, we'll have 20 spaces tomorrow. And with less pavement and moving the snow piles further from the edge of the wet ones. And what you basically see is, on this plan, uh, we have, just, sorry about that. I just know of you that the updated screen is, um, we basically have the pavement. Yeah, come on, sorry about that. Good job. So big picture, we just have, but we're trimming off the pavement at the edge of the property and inviting that further away. And all the conditions that were stated and talked about the last meeting, we're in agreement of in the hope is to accept the condition as written by Elizabeth and to seek approval tonight.
Great, thank you. Um, Elizabeth, as always, thank you very much for this very comprehensive and easily understandable letter. Um, to me, this, this, uh, proposal makes a lot of sense. I think the arguments presented for the, um, parking needs not being that the twenty-nine spaces are very compelling. Um, I think the design is uh, an improvement from what's there. And I think this is a win to get someone compatible with the building and the area in uh, as a use. Um, that being said, um, one question, Elizabeth. Uh, I know, I, I probably just didn't see this, but I saw that the, uh, engineering division recommended the driveway apron, apron repair be a condition. Is it a condition? Did I just miss it in the conditions?
Um, so the, so the planning board had a, a detailed conversation about this. Um, the, the letter from engineering talks about uh, having the applicant include in the project uh, repair of the existing driveway aprons. Um, and there may be ADA issues. Um, so I'm, the conversation the planning board had is, um, the, the driveway aprons uh, are, are not part of this project. Um, uh, they're, they're not, you know, the limit of work doesn't even, you know, extend out into the public road right of way. So there was hesitance, um, on the part of the planning board to have the applicant uh, extend their work into the driveway aprons w- without an understanding of what may have ADA compliance issues means. Because if, if they, if they take that on, um, then they are the ones that are now going to have to address this ADA issue within the public road right of way. So what the planning board's, um, final, uh, discussion and what they recommended is a um, two conditions, uh, one, prior to the commencement of any site work, the applicant provide the engineering division photos of the pavement for both the driveway aprons and the crosswalk apron. There's a crosswalk right there on Walden Street to document the existing condition of the pavement. And then the second condition is prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, um, the applicant. Uh, hang on. The applicant submit to CMLP Engineering Division post-construction. Oh, wait, no, uh, I gotta find it now. Hang on. Um.
As-built plan.
Uh, oh, um, the applicant shall submit to CPW Engineering photos of the pavement for both driveway aprons and the crosswalk on Alden, Walden Street to document the condition of the pavement following construction. If it is determined that the pavement has significantly deteriorated, the applicant's contractor shall file a right-of-way permit with CPW Engineering Division for the repair of the driveway and or crosswalk aprons on Walden Street.
Got it. Condition twenty. All right. That's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
I just have one quick one for Elizabeth, um, Hughes. So the, I, I agree with everything, um, Elizabeth Akers Moore said about the plans and all that. I think it's terrific. I guess my only question here is, is that the parking is based on the use by this particular um, tenant or this particular, I guess, this particular tenant and, and uh, if there is a, I, I don't want to use the word necessarily change of use because I think that maybe is, is too broad. But if there's a change of occupancy of this by somebody who's got, you know, offices that are occupied in a different way um, than you would in a real estate office. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what, if anything, that they would need to do at that point, um, with respect to this, uh, given the nature of this plan.
Uh, so if, um, this, you know, if they were to, you know, ten years from now, um, you know, Edie and Chris uh, win the lottery and, and retire and somebody, you know, comes in and, and takes over the building. Um, you know, a different use, this special permit does not extend to, you know, any other use than than this project for which the special permit is being granted for.
That's was my understanding. I just wanted to make, just clarify it just to be sure.
Um, and I, you know, if there's a way to, um, it, it, it may be, um, you know, the board can condition this special permit and specifically put in a condition that this special permit is, you know, only for this applicant and this use. And any, you know, any.
Well, I think, I guess the point is, is if there's a change of use that would change the level of parking required by the occupants of the building.
That, that's automatic.
Then, then that's the only thing I'm really worried about. I think that's, that's the key here from my point.
I, I, I don't think if a, another, you know, if, if the applicant were to, you know, retire and, and a different real estate office, you know, came in and took over the building. I, I don't think the circumstances for the reasons for the relief from parking change. I think industry-wise, real estate agent, you know, that type of business, this is the model.
I agree.
The model now. So, um, but if there is any change of use, this special permit does not extend to, to any other use.
Good.
Um, Ravi, did you have a question?
I, I had the exact same question as Jim.
Oh, great. Um, anyone else on the board? Okay, let me open the public comment. Is there any public comment? I do not see any, so I will close public comments. Um, great. Well, it sounds like we can move ahead with a motion unless anyone has anything to add.
I can make a motion to, uh,
No, you can't because you're not in.
Oh, yeah, you can. He's the one who mentioned it, then he tried to make a motion. Oh, man.
Thanks for paying attention, Jim. At least somebody is.
You're not paying attention to yourself. I like that. All right. Jim, you want to make a motion?
Uh, Robbie, if you got it, I, that'd be great. I'm still hunting down.
Okay, um, I'm making a motion to approve the special permit, um, for W H Walden's application for a special permit with site plan review on the bylaw section seven, seven, two, twelve, seven, seven, two, thirteen, eleven, six, and eleven, eight for a two thousand three hundred sixty-seven square foot second story addition and relief from parking and parking design standards at fifty-nine Walden Street. Um.
And except the findings and conditions as outlined in the planning board's March twenty-second letter.
Yes, that is what I meant. Thank you.
All right.
Second.
Great. All in favor, Mr. Faya?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Is a Chris Moore. Aye. Thank you very much. Good luck with the project.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And thank you to Elizabeth, especially for a very well-written, um, letter. I was just shocked about how, how much time and effort goes into something like that. And I appreciate it very much. We appreciate.
Thank you. You should see the next one.
I can imagine.
Right, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next one.
Oh, boy.
Chris is laughing.
Think of the next one, right?
There's a lot of reading for me today. I don't know about you guys. Um.
The next one's even better.
Um, so printing and printing and printing. I was worried. All right. Um, so this is administrative. Yep.
Yeah. So what I thought I'd do is, um, share my screen, run through the last bit of edits. Um, there's two items, uh, for the board to discuss that the applicant would like the, um, you know, the board to consent her. Uh, so, uh, anybody doesn't mind, I'll share my screen. Um, uh, most of the edits are, um, and Robbie, I do have your edits included, uh, in here as well, and I'll go through those. Um, most of these edits, um, they're all in highlight are just for, um, clarification reasons. Um, the project site within the town of Concord deleting, um, a redundant. Um, this is just to, um, clarify the, the steps because the board typically does not vote um, and then continue, um, and review your decision. So, uh, this language added adds just makes that more clear. Uh, and then the applicant, um, asked that the board's motion specifically include the authorization um, to allow the town planner to execute the decision. Um, there's been, uh, some corrections in, um, the square footage. I think, uh, these are just um, nothing, nothing changed. These are just, uh, corrections that uh, have been made as the projects gone forward um, as far as the square footage of the site. Um, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure where I got the, um, the square footage wrong for the wetland and flood plane because it is reflected accurately uh, in the unit calculation. So that is just a correction, uh, of an error on my part. Um, and this is the first item that the applicant would like the board to discuss. Um, allowing the, some flexibility as far as the floor plans, um, and the, you know, various architectural details of the house um, of each house and, uh, but that the actual square footage of the dwellings would not change. Um, their placements, you know, on the lots would not change if they have a, you know, area for the garages, you know, you know, they're not going to automatically, you know, go up to a four-car garage or anything like that, but just having the board allow that flexibility. Um, and I think.
Does that include height?
Uh, no, it does not include height. We're only talking about, um, floor plans, interior floor plans and architectural details.
Okay.
Which we haven't really we haven't ruled on anyway, or we're not, it's on our decision. So it's just making it explicit.
Correct.
Right, yes.
But I agree with Jim. Can we put something that says not height?
We, we've got it, Madam Chair. I, i- if you go to special condition two, you'll see that's made explicit.
Yeah, great. But so this deals with unit size. So that's why I didn't feel that that needed to be in here. Um, because when you get, when you get down here, um, you know, as far as the height is very specific. And that is also, um, where we, where this section is added, that the building height um, you know, is what's shown on the, the approved plans as of March third. So those are the plans that you saw.
Right.
What, what about the footprint of the building as well? I know we, you know, been concerned about exactly where the duplex, for example, was cited and.
Oh, so I'm gonna jump to.
Elizabeth, while you're doing that, I, I can answer, um, Robbie. Um, the, those, those footprints are shown on the, on the revised plans that were submitted, Robbie, and those are incorporated by reference in here.
Okay, so if you try to change the footprint, then the site plan would not be accurate, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Yes, that's right.
And for the actual condition, um, it's architectural fe- features and the floor plan. So, um, you know, that does not allow for a change in the footprint of the building. But if somebody wants to flip a kitchen, um, and.
Wouldn't they be able to do that anyway? I guess somebody.
Everybody does it.
Right. So why are we making it? I, I don't mind making it explicit as long as by making it explicit, we then don't muddy anything else in here, like in terms of height and footprint, which I know everyone's saying we're not, but um, I'm, I'm, I'm confident.
Technically, I think technically we have a lot more um, say over the design, the actual design of these houses than we usually deal with. So I can understand why somebody's worried about it from a legal point of view of putting in this change.
And, and I want to say through you, Madam Chair, if you keep reading numbers two and three, uh, in that paragraph, or maybe it's, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, I just can't see it. But I, I, my recollection from our discussion this morning is, um, that the second subsection there, the subparagraph B deals with the height. So there's no change in the, no increase in the square footage, number of bedrooms or garage sizes in excess of the parameters previously mentioned. Second one is no change in the heights. Um, and then the third one is that the building commissioner and the planner have to confirm that any changes are substantially in compliance with the permit. So we're, we're really putting guardrails around this, knowing all of the concerns the board had, um, expressed during the hearings.
Okay. No, I appreciate that.
I think you're just missing a couple of words in B, right? Like, in no event may the height exceed.
Yeah.
That's fine. Sure.
Yeah.
Um, Robbie, I'm sorry, Robbie, what was it?
I think it's supposed to say, in no event may the height exceed. Right now it just says, oh, I guess there's a nor in A.
Right. It, it's redundant, but.
Yeah, why would I say nor, in any event, may the height exceed?
That's fine.
You want me to put?
Nor may the height in any event exceed the height as measured, Elizabeth, I think.
All right. So we're gonna keep may.
Yeah, no, no, I see the nor now, so that makes sense. That, I'm fine with it as is then.
Okay.
The nor works.
Really and truly, most, Elizabeth and I went back and forth on this language. And this is Elizabeth's language in the end, and, and really and truly, there's no attempt to insert any wiggle room in here other than what we discussed.
Okay. Um, so do you want me to go back where we were and go through the rest?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yep.
Um, so what I will do is if that is acceptable to the board, I will, um, and.
Maybe just applicants, apostrophe duplex and home plans, Elizabeth?
I'm, uh, is it, can? Is that good?
No.
No, okay.
That, take out four.
This far?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, right.
Turns out the duplex and home plans, uh, oh, that for the, okay, yeah, I see what you're saying, for the duplex ones. Yeah, sorry, right, for the duplex and home plans applicant maybe, may sub, uh, may substitute. So instead of substituted, may substitute.
Right.
The applicant may substitute.
There it is.
With plans that vary, I mean.
Yeah.
They sub- substitute plans, right? Not with.
I think that, I think that does it.
Yeah.
Just more.
Moving along. All right. Um, and to Robbie's point, this is where, um,
Let's see, this measure photo.
Um, so this is a again, just referencing that height is limited to those plans.
Okay.
Um, and then there's um, just a this is Robbie's um, correction of this restriction.
All right, sorry, can you, that's um, page seven.
Page seven.
Uh, ten point, where are we? Ten point, two point?
Um, ten point, two point, nine point, one.
Um, okay, above that, there was something I had a correction, it was really minor, but see where it says the natural resources, uh.
Yep.
The Natural Resources Commission, you took out director, yeah. Thank you.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Um, okay, um, of this.
Corporation of this.
And and that's the um, restriction about no um, public trails.
Sure, that's that's fine.
Wow. And that's just um, adding regarding the conservation restriction. And.
Okay.
We, I missed an of. And I missed an S. And then this was a leftover sentence from the planning board's recommendation to that got deleted. And these conditions. And then this is um, just when the duplex got moved, things got shifted. So this just um, corrects the area for each of the um, home sites. And Robbie added annual projected.
When you get to nineteen, are you on nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, this was really minor, but where you put the the bore, you wrote B O A R S, did you change that? The board agrees.
Yes, yes, that's, yeah, all of those were corrected.
Okay, great.
Um, and then this was um, added, the Subbury Water District did sign, and the board got a copy of this way back in September. Uh, and the Public Works Director um, has looked at that, he was part of that discussion of that memorandum of understanding, and he is moving forward. He has signed it, then it has to be brought to um, the Public Works Commission and and then so he's moving that through the process. Um, so we just um, added uh, this sentence to document that.
Right.
Um, correction, that's not a they. And I'm not sure why, uh, engineering and natural resources added certified professional. Um, Public Works, um, engineering forgot this condition and it just uh, deals with um, soil testing in the areas of the bioretention basins.
Elizabeth, can you just make that a little bit bigger, if you don't mind?
Yep.
I haven't seen this one. I'm sure it's particular.
How's that?
Good, thank you. Boy, uh, depth to bedrock in that location. I think, Chris, my recollection from the the geohydro study we did in in bedrock, up like a hundred feet down in that location.
Right, it's it's way deep, way deep.
I mean, seasonal high groundwater is fine. Would do you? Do you really, does the board feel strongly about depth of bedrock? Because that'll require some doing to get the boring sound that that far. Based on what we know, I I'm happy to submit that geo study for the record if we haven't done it already, Elizabeth, but.
Right.
Even the.
I'm I'm happy to delete it.
Okay.
If even the groundwater in that area, uh, Bill, is really down deep.
And and I think given, given all the work that has been done there and the hydro um, study that was done, and the fact that the Public Works Director is, has been significantly involved in all of this. Um, that this is a standard condition, and if you, the information you provide um, is going to be sufficient.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I understand the board wants to know that the 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 drainage base is going to leach and work properly. I I hundred percent get all of that, but some of this stuff. Okay, so we'll just submit the geohydro.
There you go.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, and then this is the condition the board already discussed. Um, this um, so this part right here got deleted because it got incorporated into the previous um, into the new condition, engineering added. Um, may maybe a condominium, it may be a homeowners. More than likely, it's a condominium, correct?
Yes, right.
Should that be reflected in the rest of the decision to say condominium and not homeowners?
Um, I didn't catch it anywhere else in the decision, Elizabeth.
It is.
Um, e- either or, I think, I mean, I I I'm not certain where it's going to land. I think it's very likely to be condo, but I don't think that decision's been finalized yet.
Um, and thirty-three, uh, this one was, it was a duplicate condition.
Okay.
Um, and that's it. That's it.
That's it? Geez.
That's it.
So simple. Um, looks good to me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, do we have to do anything except sign it or we we could?
Or authorize, Elizabeth?
Yeah, nope. So I would specifically like the board to um, take a vote to accept the written decision as amended tonight and authorize um, the town planner to, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up so you have it.
Execute and deliberate, I think, Elizabeth.
There you go. Execute and file the decision on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Sir Faya?
Aye.
Is it Chris Moore? Aye. Yay.
Yay, all right. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you all.
I think that was our last, last thing too, right, Elizabeth? We got nothing else.
That is. So.
To in person, or what's what's going on with that? Yeah, thank you, everyone, for, we got there, so thank you.
Firstly, thank the board for all of your time and attention, and especially Elizabeth for her yeoman work in moving this through the eye of the needle, which is, I think, what we did, but I I really appreciate that we got here. So thank you all.
Same here.
Thank you.
You know.
Very good. Thank you, thank you.
Aye.
All right.
Um, so the House passed um, legislation, the Senate passed the legislation. Um, they have not married the two versions yet so that it can go to the governor to sign. Um, it is um, all indications that um, virtual meetings will be extended to, I believe, March of twenty twenty-five.
No one wants to meet in person again. I love it.
Um, well, so there there are some, um.
Oh, I know.
And uh, um, so I I we we don't know yet. So at this point in time, the legal notices for the April meeting are gonna be um, like uh, pandemic, it'll be either in-person, hybrid, or virtual. Um, look at agenda. So it's it's entirely up to the board.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can discuss it if people feel strongly, one way or the other. I mean, I'm perfectly happy being home when we're done with these meetings, but um, Jim doesn't care because he's out of here.
That's my last meeting.
This was it?
No, no, next, next.
Next one's your last, right? So I don't know, we can think about it and decide next meeting, I guess, but.
Yeah, I mean, I have a view, which is, I think that that as I think that given the meeting settings that we have, that that the Zoom has actually been better. Um, it's easier to see the, and for everyone to see the information, it's easier for people to get in and out. I mean, as a general rule, I think it's been a, been better from the I think the board's point of view, it seems to be better from the citizen's point of view as well, applicant's point of view, but.
Um, the one question I will bring um, forth to the board is um, that when the board uh, gets a comprehensive permit filed, um, whether they wish to um, have an initial meeting in person or um, an initial meeting, you know, because what will happen is um, the first public hearing, when the board opens the public hearing. Um, at that time, I will also invite other boards and committees to attend um, such as, you know, the planning board. Since a comprehensive permit, um, the applicant is only required to go to the Board of Appeals. Um, they, they do not go to any other board and committee uh, unless it, there is a uh, state law. So um, if there's a a nearby uh, wetland, they would still have to go to the Natural Resources Commission under the State State Wetlands Protection Act, not the local wetland bylaw, but um, but all other boards and committees where you may have gotten a recommendation for, whether it's planning board um, Public Works Commission, uh, you know, you know, anybody else, um, they would have to come to your board, your public hearing. Um, so so that's so, that's something to think about for possibly May meeting or June's meeting.
Really?
I'll be getting.
Since we're seven years on this board and I dodged the bullet at every one of them.
Oh, God.
So.
I dealt with Walden Woods, though, when I was on the planning board, so, hey.
Yeah, you 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 did your time. So something, something, something to think about. I don't expect you to think about it tonight, so.
Thank you for leaving us with that. Sorry.
As 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 long as you're gonna be uh, here at that port-a-dog show, Elizabeth, I'm fine.
Yeah, Elizabeth, you have to do all the heavy lifting on it, really, so.
Yeah.
You can let us know whether you want to commute in for that meeting or not.
Um, well, I think, uh, when, when do you guys rotate your chairs?
Oh, yeah, when do we do that?
Um, usually it's the um, it's like, uh, all all boards and committees do it in June for or right after town meeting. Usually right after town meeting is when they change chairs.
So you're saying the future chair can decide? All right, let's end that then, we'll.
And the only other, the only other thing with Jim going off, um, uh, usually it's the most senior um, associate member that gets moved up to a full member if they wish. Robbie?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. As a full member, it's just crazy. Hope you're prepared. Um, great. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and we'll see you in uh, next month.
Fantastic.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Have a good night.